Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to this meeting of the Wayne Westland Board of Education. It is 7:00 PM on October 25th, 2021. And on behalf of the Board of Education, I'd like to welcome you to this meeting. To participate in the meeting during the citizens' comment portion of the agenda, you will raise your hand. I will acknowledge you. You'll come to the podium. You'll have three minutes to speak. At the end of the meeting, those people that wish to make a comment on non-agenda items will have an opportunity to address the board at that time. We're now going to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag, led by Andrew Karas and Lydia La Forge of Elliott Elementary School. Would you come over here, kids? Stand right here, please. Thank you. And there's the flag. Whenever you're ready.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you'd just continue to stand right here. I'd like to introduce you to everyone. Everyone, on your right is Lydia La Forge. She is a fifth grader in Mrs. Butter's class at Elliott Elementary School. She has two brothers, one sister, a future sister-in-law, and two black cats, Lily and Diamond. Her weekend hobby is bowling. She is also a FNAF fan, which is Five Nights at Freddy's. Her favorite class at Elliott is art and gym, and her favorite subjects are reading and math. Everyone, Lydia La Forge. The gentleman before you is Andrew Karas. He's a fifth grader in Mrs. Butter's class also at Elliott Elementary. He lives with his mom and dad, and also has a black cat named Lexi. He loves to swim, and he loves winter because of the snow. He also loves science and related subjects, and one day would like to be a veterinarian. Ladies and gentlemen, Andrew Karas. Stay right there. I like this schoolie. Thank you, Lydia. Thank you, Andrew. For participation in the flag ceremony during a regular meeting of the Board of Education of the Wayne Westland Community School District. Do you hold it like this when we get your picture? Do you have mom and dad with you?
Yeah, let me go on down.
Mom and dad, you want to come on down and be in the picture? Did you bring anybody else from school with you? You didn't bring your principal?
Well, the principal's here.
Oh. Okay. Andrew, good. Do you want to get your picture taken, Mr. Karas? Don't say anything back. Hold on, hold on. Photo bound. Thank you, everyone. Now, we know you probably have homework and everything to do. If you have to cut out early, it's perfectly fine. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Ms. Hines, will you kindly call the roll?
Yes, I will. Okay. Dr. Frederick Weaver?
Here.
Ms. Kimberly May?
Present.
John Albrecht?
Here.
Tom Buckaloo?
Here.
Mr. Neal is excused. And trustee Hines, here. We have six and one today.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Hines. Next item on our agenda this evening is 151.22, which is recognitions and presentations. Dr. Dignan.
Thank you, President Cox. Real quick, before we get into these, this is something new we're going to do at every board meeting. We're going to have representatives, student representatives from each of our high schools kind of report out what's happening in the different schools. So again, I want to thank all the students here, the administrators, and also I see some student leaders, teacher leaders here. What I'd like to do is start with Wayne Westland Community High School representatives. If you would come up to the podium and let us know what's happening at Wayne Westland Community High School.
Good evening, ladies. Please introduce yourself.
Good evening. So I am Victoria Danu, and this is?
Cheyenne.
How do you do?
You're both from Wayne Westland Community High School. And I am very happy that I was invited to come and talk to you guys about my school today. And I would like to speak on all the cool things that are going on there. So first thing I wanted to talk about was the environment. Our environment is very different from other schools. Everyone knows students, including myself, on a first-name basis. It's very welcoming, very warm. And no matter what kind of day you're having, whether it's good, bad, or just outright horrible, like teachers are there for you. One of the things I would also like to talk about is some of the benefits of being in Wayne Westland Community High School. We have something called social-emotional learning, SEL for short. We have it every week on Wednesdays. And usually Wednesdays are mostly focused towards our students' mental health. In our school, we really prioritize mental health. And I think that's something very important to all of our students. I know all of our students look forward to these Wellness Wednesdays, including myself. You know, leading off of that, we know if we need help, we can go to anyone there, whether it's a teacher, a counselor, we have a social worker, just anyone there, we can rely on them. Another thing I would like to talk about is our different learning styles. The most common one we see in our school is project-based learning. We follow this process, read, create, and present, meaning we learn about a topic, do some research, and after we read about it and do some research, we create some type of project based on what we learned. And then after all of that, we present it to our peers. Another thing would be student leadership. It is a team that works with staff alongside of staff, and it helps make decisions for our school. So like, one of the things that we did was we helped plan suicide prevention week. We did all of that. So that was... Another thing I would like to address is how it feels there. I would like to describe it as it really feels like a small community. Like, everybody is just there. And even the staff can recognize changes in their kids, and they address that. Like, if you're having a bad day, a staff member will come up to you. They'll look at you and be like, hey, do you need to talk? Do you need something? Can I do something for you? And that is something that me and all the students really appreciate, is that knowing that they're there for us. And I just wanted to share a little bit more personal. I came from Wayne Memorial, and I heard about Tinkum, you know. A few years ago, it didn't have the best reputation, you know. This is the place that I heard a few years ago where these kids would come because they weren't, you know, they were the failures, so to say. The dropouts, the kids who got in fights. But actually, being there, it really changed my view on this school. Like, a lot. And I'm so happy to be here. And getting more onto bed. You know, in my personal experience, it's just, it's a great place to be. The, it really gives students hope. I was given hope there. I thought I would never catch up to graduate on time. You know, I thought I could never do it. And when I came here, I was given a chance. I was finally given a chance. I was finally told, yes, you can. And now, for the first time ever, I am an all-A student, and I'm doing so incredibly well. I'm motivated. And I'm guaranteeing that all the students feel the same way. Every single student is treated the same. They are given the same hope that I was given. Thank you for having me. And thank you for taking some time and listening to me. Thank you so much.
It was a pleasure and a joy to listen to you. What we'd like to ask you to do, we'd like to ask you to come down to the front of the room. Dr. Weaver has a certificate that he'd like to present to you, and also we'd like to get your picture. And we'd like to thank you for your wonderful comments. We're so happy to hear them.
Thank you to Cheyenne. And to Victoria for the wonderful presentation and for being proud of your school. I know your school is proud of you.
Before you take the picture, Ms. Milstead, will you come in and get in the picture, please?
The principal, Ms. Milstead. Thank you, Ms. Milstead. Make sure you all smile so you can see it in the picture. Thank you so very much.
Thank you again.
You can sit here all night and listen to that.
Next, we'd like to ask the John Glenn High School student representatives to get up at the podium. Please do introductions, and then also, I know you guys are going to kind of share the wealth with your message, so.
Hi. I'm Isaiah Hernandez. I'm an executive board member at John Glenn. I'm going to talk about some activities that we've already had. We started off with a leadership camp with over 50 students attending. We bonded with the scavenger hunt, and we painted kindness rocks to place all around Glenn. We had some spirit themes for football games, and we had the students wear the themes to school the day of the football game and share the pictures on the student-rent Instagram page, our Launchpad. Our homecoming theme was Beyond the Stars, and we had a Spirit Week dress video and a flyer. We had spirit contests that week between the grades. We posted flyers all around the school. You had points to dress in each theme. Even teachers participated. At the pep rally, we had each grade level have representatives to compete in the games. Over 25 of our groups participated in our homecoming parade. We also had our own Suicide Awareness Week with a bulletin board that's still hanging today and daily announcements. I'm going to pass it over to Emma.
Hi, my name is Emma Socia. I'm president of Executive Board for Student Council. Here are some things our leadership class is currently doing at John Glenn. So we started wearing college gear every Thursday, and for this week, we created Halloween Spirit Days. We're also planning spirit themes and leadership events for each of our winter sports. We are also, this week, our leadership class is going to be helping Stevenson students decorate for their haunted house. In leadership class, we have groups that recognize students' birthdays, a group called Rocket Spotlight, which highlights students and staff to get to know them better. And so leadership class has just been broken into groups to tackle these different tasks, such as Mercury Minute, which highlights important information from Mr. Wager's weekly newsletter with a post on the student Instagram page. Now, I will be passing it to Maddie.
Hi, I'm Maddie Steele. I'm co-president to Emma on Executive Board, and I'm going to talk about some future events that we have planned at John Glenn. We want to continue our Spirit Day dress themes because they bring a lot of positivity and joy into the atmosphere, and I think it's just really important to have that in a school. We're also planning a Rivals Week against Wayne Memorial. It started two years ago, and it was really successful, so we want to continue it. We're also going to be highlighting the spring sport athletes, and we're going to have a college signing day for those seniors that are graduating onto their next step. We're going to have a You Matter Week in the spring to kind of talk about mental health awareness and that type of thing because mental health is very important in our school. It's not just about grades in our eyes. It's about like taking care of your students and being there for each other. And we're going to have a lot of senior events going on to kind of recognize all the hard work that they did this year. And towards the end of the year, we're going to start incorporating the ninth graders into our atmosphere and kind of teach them. And we're going to meet with the students at Stevenson Middle School. They're in the Lighthouse program, and just kind of be their kind of motivators and someone to look up to. Thank you so much for your time. I really appreciate it.
Excellent report. Thank you very much.
You guys might come down front to get an award and also your picture, and grab your teacher leader too on your way down.
That's great work, too.
Yeah.
Great work.
Great job.
Impactful work.
Thank you for being here tonight. Every one of you are leaders, rock stars, and we appreciate you. Isaiah Hernandez? Kaya Heron? Did I say that right? Madison Spera? And La Socia? And Abigail Matero?
Thank you, Ms. Corbett. Thank you, everyone.
Next up, we're going to hear from Wayne Memorial High School.
Hello. I'm a student senator at Wayne Memorial High School. I'm a senior. And around two weeks ago...
What is your name, Ms.?
Oh, Maria Rodriguez Albron. Around two weeks ago today, we started a homecoming week. Our homecoming theme was Dancing With the Decades. So every class had their own decade. Seniors were 90s, juniors were 80s, sophomores were 70s, and freshmen were 2000. So for one of our homecoming day themes, Spirit Day themes, we all dressed as our decades. And it was pretty well. I think it's one of the most successful homecoming weeks that we've had. The Thursday of that week was our pep rally, and I think it also was one of the best pep rallies we've ever had. Everyone was so... It was just nice. It was something to look forward to since of COVID. Like, it was just something to bring our spirits up, especially seniors since it's our last year, our last pep rally, even though we only had like three, two. Two, basically. But it was something nice to have. And as a senior, I appreciated it a lot. It felt like we all just came back together. It was like poetic almost, if you want to say it, but it was nice. Our homecoming day was on the 15th, on a Saturday. It also went really well. I'm surprised it went that well. Not to shame us, but it went nice, to say the least. I'm part of the dance committee, so it had to go well. If not, I would have looked bad. But it went really well. And just last week, on, was it Wednesday, I think? We had our college application day where we would go to the library every hour, and seniors would go to apply to schools. I personally applied to two schools. Yay me. But yeah, our school is doing such a good job with encouraging kids to apply to college. It is such an important thing, especially now more than ever since college. People just don't want to go anymore because of this and that. But there's always stuff to look forward to in the future, and going to college is such an important thing. Not for everybody, but it is something important to look forward to if you want a better future than what you have now. But our upcoming event is actually this Wednesday, our Creepy Crawl. Guys, come on, show up. I think it's four to seven? Yeah, four to seven. Our soccer field, our grass soccer field. So show up, guys, bring your kids, or you can just show up by yourself if you want to. But yeah, we're looking forward to that on Wednesday. And our upcoming, most recent upcoming event is our blood drive, which is happening the fifth or the fourth? I think it's the, it's the fourth, but we're also very excited for that. Our, the blood drive representative came to talk to us and our leadership class not too long ago, and she's also very excited. We're looking to donate around 75 pints of blood, maybe even more than that if we have a great show up. But I'm hoping and guessing we will. We're trying to really showcase that we want the donations, obviously. But other than that, I think that's all I have to say.
That's a great report. Who's eligible for the blood drive? Just seniors or?
No, it's, if you're 16, you can go ahead and participate, but you have to have parents' consent. Every 17-year-old good to go by yourself and do it. But obviously, you have to get a physical, you know, get checked up, make sure that your blood is good enough to donate and help other people.
Good luck, and thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Dr. Anderson, can you join her? Dr. Anderson? We're bringing six kids this time.
You should just get your picture taken, Dr. Anderson. There's only two of you.
We would like to give you this award for being your school's representative tonight, Wayne Memorial High School. My question is, when do you find time to go to class?
Never.
Yeah, always. Thank you very much.
And last stop, we are the William D. Ford Career Technical Center.
Hello, my name is Avery Jakina. I am a second year or a senior at William D. Ford. I'm in the culinary department. So this year has been very new. It's basically like we have a bunch of first years running around. No one knows what's going on because last year, because of COVID, because no one was cooking because they weren't in the kitchen. But this year, we're working really hard to get back to normal. We have, I don't know if you guys know what Taylor Towers is? It's across the street. It's a retirement home. You know, there's old people there that are retired. And in a retirement home, they don't normally get fed very well. Well, in the culinary department, we cook for them. Lunch every single day, very good meals. I'm jealous of them. I wish I got to eat them, but I don't. We also are working very hard to open up our restaurant. It's currently not open. It'll be open in the afternoons when it is open. And we're currently working hard to open up our student cafeteria where the culinary department is like, it's a little fast food restaurant for the students for break time. And we currently open once a week only to the culinary department because of COVID. But we're working very hard to get the other kids in there, and we're very excited to get back to normal. About it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. If you send it, will you come up?
Should I share Avery with Wayne Memorial?
Well, thank you for being here tonight and representing the William D. Ford Career Technical Center. We want to give you this award of recognition. You did a great job tonight. Also for Sarah Coffin? And Madeline Britton.
Thank you very much.
I want to thank all the student representatives for taking time to come out tonight. Again, if you need to leave, I know some of you guys have to study, so feel free to exit. I do want to thank the Culinary Arts Program at the William D. Ford Center. They made our meal this evening prior to the board meeting, so we're very appreciative of that. So thank you.
Thank you. And just to the students, we are also excited that things are getting back to normal for you. Very happy for you. Next item on our agenda, ladies and gentlemen, is 152.22, which is citizens' comments on items which appear on this evening's agenda. Ms. Hines, are any of the persons wishing to speak, wish to speak on items that appear on the agenda?
I have a few. I'm not sure with regards to, they left it blank, but is it Elliot Thompson available?
Is that an item that appears on the agenda tonight, or is it a comment on something else?
It's about the mask mandate.
Okay, okay. There's a portion at the end of the meeting, and we'll allow you time to speak at that time. Thank you.
I have a Christina Jacobs.
Thank you, Christina.
I have a Jessica, is it Goble?
Oh, thank you.
Okay. And last one is an Elaine, is it Radley? Same thing? Corson, okay.
Okay. Anyone wish to address the board on an agenda item? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to the consent agenda. 153.22 is our motion on the consent agenda. Moved by Mr. Albrecht. Is there support? Support by Dr. Weaver. Roll call vote, please, Ms. Hines?
Okay. We have Ms. May?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yep.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Melandie, yes. Mr. Cox?
Yes.
And let's see, and then Mr. Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Okay, so it looks like we have six.
Motion passed. Thank you, Ms. Hines. Next item on our agenda this evening is 154.22, which is a resolution, which is a petition for student reinstatement 2122-C. Everyone's received this under separate cover. The resolution must be read into the record. Sir, do we have the resolution?
Yes, I do.
Dr. Weaver, will you kindly read the resolution?
Wayne Westland Community Schools, Westland, Michigan 48185 Resolution. Whereas the Board of Education for the Wayne Westland Community Schools convened on October 25th, 2021 to consider the petition for reinstatement filed on behalf of expelled student 2122-C, and to consider the report and recommendation of the reinstatement committee previously appointed by the Board of Education. Whereas the Board of Education is persuaded for the reasons set forth in the reinstatement committee's report and recommendation that student 2122-C should not be reinstated to the Wayne Westland Community Schools. Therefore, it is resolved that the reinstatement committee's report and recommendation is hereby adopted by the Board of Education and that for reasons stated therein, the petition for school reinstatement filed on behalf of student 2122-C is hereby denied. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution will be provided to the student and to the parents.
Is there a motion?
Some move.
Second. Moved by Dr. Weaver. Is there support?
Second.
Support by Mr. Buckaloo. Roll call vote, please.
Sir, before?
Discussion?
So this, this is the, the fourth petition for reinstatement since January, and the recommendation on three of those has been to vote no. And I can support that. My, my concern is that we're really an institution of second chances, and under normal circumstances, we should be reinstating these students just as quickly as we possibly can. I don't believe that that's something we should do in this case. My problem is this. In each of the three cases that we've denied this year, there has been no apparent effort by the part of the parent to seek any kind of professional assistance, guidance for correcting what, for want of a better term, I'll call the misadventures of the student involved. I'm wondering aloud of the Board of the Superintendent, are we making it clear to parents at the time of expulsion that it is essential that they seek these kinds of professional services? Again, we should be reinstating people because they've sought this professional help, and, and we've seen some, some movement in the proper direction that would allow the student to come back and be safe in our schools and be productive and successful. And again, I haven't seen that in three of the four cases. So are we making it clear to parents that they need to seek that kind of professional assistance? That's my question, sir.
Dr. Weaver?
Uh, thank you, uh, to my esteemed colleague. At the time that a student is expelled, they are, uh, the parents and the students are directed toward what needs to be done for their child to be reinstated. And also, if they need any help at all getting this done, that we would assist them in any way possible. The other, uh, thing that I'd like to mention, President Cox, is that we look at this as a second chance. And that's not the part, for lack of better terms, that's not the truth at all. When kids are expelled, they have a long laundry list of infractions that, that the committee goes through. So, um, no child, as far as I know, does one thing wrong and is expelled and never allowed back. That's not the case. It is, uh, most always repeat offenders.
I just have one thing.
Ms. Hines?
Yeah, I get concerned about the, um, expulsion of the students because a lot of times, a lot of our kids are going through social, emotional tragedy. You know, with COVID, there's a lot of things going on in the home. And I definitely would like to figure out some type of way that we can help these families. You know, sometimes you can't just say, oh, they're not trying. You don't know what the situation is behind the scenes. You know, do they have transportation to get there? Um, does they have, does their insurance even cover a lot of psychiatric care? Because some Medicaid, some psychiatrists, they don't take Medicaid. So as a board member, this kind of troubles me a little bit. I definitely would like to reach out to the children and figure out some type of way to make it work. Because when you're expelling them, they're out to commit trouble crimes, pipeline to prison. So if these kids are out here having some type of issues, especially with mental illness, you know, we definitely need to reach out and figure out a way instead of just kicking them out of school. So that's my, my feelings on it because it is a lot of, like I said, it's COVID, depression's high, drugs is high, you know, alcoholism is high. And one thing that tore my heart apart during, when we had the kids at home, they were in horrible conditions. Some were abusive conditions and sometimes schools are only outlet. So, you know, we have to take certain things into account. But as a board member and a parent myself, I would really hope that we can find a better way to, you know, reach out to these troubled kids. Because a lot of times, you know, we've always had issues with behavior in the district, but we just have to figure out a way to reach out and figure out how to help. So that's, that's my concern. Just I don't want to put them out in the street and now here you go, now they're breaking into your house while you're at work. You know, get into more trouble, go into prison. Our job is to educate the kids and teach them a better way. So if we can figure out, you know, working with you guys, our interve, inter, interventionalists to see, you know, how we can help. Because a lot of times, behavior problems, you know, something going on at home, emotional, social, you know, something that I just really would like to figure out a way to help if we can.
Further discussion?
Yes. Um, and I agree with, with you, Ms. Hines. We need to do more to help. And yet, at the same time, um, I've read through this. And without getting too particular, I have no problem with expelling this student. The student was a disruption, uh, threatened, uh, staff and students with violence. And, and expulsion was right. My concern is, are we, and, and Dr. Weaver answered the question. Are we making it, uh, clear to the parent that the parent needs to seek the kind of professional one-on-one assistance that our school district doesn't and shouldn't be expected to provide? Now, there's a, uh, in talking with, uh, Ms. May earlier this evening, she has an interest in, uh, promoting socio-emotional learning. And I have no problem with that. I think we're already in the process of doing that. We've been working on that for the last three years or so with certain levels of success. And we need to continue it, do more even. But with this particular expulsion, I have no problems with that or supporting it. My problem is, why isn't, aren't we able to more frequently reinstate students? And apparently, in this particular case, the onus falls strictly on the parent for not doing the parent's part in this process.
I, I just would like to say that, um, we've had a little bit of a streak here with not allowing the, um, children back into the district. But I would say for the most part, we've been pretty good, um, accepting our, our kids back into the district whose parents do their due diligence. And again, uh, they are given copious amounts of information at the, at the time of expulsion. So even things that are free to them. So when parents make no effort at all, um, it is a concern to the committee.
Ms., Ms. May?
Um, I just wanted to, again, uh, following up to Mr. Buckaloo and Mrs. Hines, as well as Dr. Weaver, the importance of looking at, as Dr. Weaver coined it or framed it as a streak. And so, and when you talk about looking at data and saying like, hey, maybe this is something we need to look at, our practices, what we're doing. Maybe there's something we need to do differently to ensure or to help our parents do better. Because as Mrs. Hines said, when we do not reinstate students, we are kind of just leaving them out there in the streets. And that's a concern because we want to try to help. And I know we can't necessarily help every student because we have to take our entire student body into account. And so that is very important as well. I just think that when you start to look at data and say, hey, we're seeing a pattern of we're unable to reinstate students, maybe we need to just take a step back and take a look at what our practices and our policies are. And I know early on, I asked about a board workshop just to have some conversation around discipline, around our policies, just so that we have an understanding and we're all on the same page and we're taking into account the fact that we are in a pandemic. So we're gonna have some, we're gonna see kids differently. We're gonna, kids are gonna show up and expressing their needs in different ways. And so I think we just need to have some conversations around that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. May. Further discussion? I don't usually talk about this because just by the nature of the issue, we don't talk about it. But I will, the last four or five times that you referred to it as a streak because we typically don't have four or five.
Right.
But we also don't typically come off two years where kids weren't able to socialize at all because they were home on quarantine for COVID. I mean, this is an unusual circumstance. And we can't think for a moment that the experience that these young people have had with the entire COVID thing isn't affecting their development. It's affecting their development, their ability to interact with one another successfully. And I think we're seeing a little bit of that. I agree with what you, uh, with what you said, Mr. Buckaloo and Ms. Hines. I would like to do more too. But as I look at each individual, one of these decisions, there's no way I would have voted different. It's, it's just not acceptable. Because I care about that child and I also care about the other twenty-nine kids that are in the class being threatened. And I also care about the teacher who's being threatened. We just can't have it. In fact, we're not going to have it. Like, the kids in school don't deserve to live under that circumstance. We should be able to find a path forward for those kids who can't make the social grade without the kids who are making the social grade paying the bill for it. Because that has to stop. We can't have people going home at night telling their parents at the dinner table about the just ridiculous outrageous event that happened at school and think it's gonna happen again tomorrow because the board's not gonna do anything about it. Because the board is gonna do something about it. And that's my feeling in any event. Roll call vote please, Ms. Hines.
All right. We have Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes? And it's like we have everyone, so it looks like the motion passed.
Thank you, Ms. Hines. Next item on our agenda, folks, is Board of Education Committee Reports, one five four point two two. Finance Committee Report, Treasurer May.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. The Finance Committee met on October eighteenth and the meeting was convened at four thirty PM. Mrs. Johnson shared information regarding the purchase of a UV-led printer slash cutter for the district. The printer will be used by the Communications Department for marketing and student interns will be trained on how to use the machinery. This is a great opportunity for our student interns to expand their knowledge. Mrs. Curry introduced the resource Beable, Beable, to the committee explaining it's an online program that supports both literacy and career exploration. The district will implement the program in grades second through six, with a potential implementation for grade seven as an elective course. According to Dr. Dignan, the best thing about Beable, Beable, is that it has the literacy component built into the college and career readiness piece, so it links the student to their lexile, which is their reading level. The career readiness piece is called World of Work. This program incorporates a lot of different possibilities that will assist and empower their students. This resource will be purchased with ESSER funds. Mr. O'Donnell requested the purchase of the Learning Platform, which is a multifaceted tool that allows the district to track and monitor the use of various technology platforms. This tool will allow the district to determine the effectiveness of programs currently being implemented. The tool will be purchased with ESSER funds. Mrs. Markey presented the twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three Head Start Propo, Proposed Budget. Seventy-seven percent of the budget is salaries and benefits. Fifteen percent of the budget is classroom supplies. And the remaining eight percent will be spent on contracted services, professional development, and mileage for staff. Mr. Spiezak explained Bid Package Five, which is Edison, Hamilton, and Schweitzer bond renovation. The work will be charged to three accounts, Bond, Sinking Fund, and ESSER. This information will be presented this evening for board approval. Mr. Spiezak also shared that a committee was formed to develop the next set of standards for classroom technology to support instruction. Mr. Vander, Mr. Vander Zee further explained that they would like to purchase a variety of technology tools to pilot within classrooms to determine what best fits the needs of the district. The request is to use bond money to support the purchase of pilot items. Once the pilot is complete, the committee will reconvene to obtain a census on the most effective technology tools. The anticipated timeline is to begin installation of materials in the beginning of the summer twenty-twenty-two. And continuing into all classrooms have been completed. Finally, Mr. Spiezak stated that there is a change order for John Glenn and Wayne Memorial for cabling. The change order will be presented to the board for approval this evening. Mrs. Cleaves shared both the investment report and the monthly check register. Superintendent Dr. Dignan shared his appreciation for everyone. He stated that we just partnered with the Eastern Michigan Education First Opportunity Scholarship Fund, which will benefit eighty-five to ninety percent of our student body, as well as we have a Lawrence Tech Blue Devil Promise for fifty scholarships. There will be a staff luncheon on November second, two twenty, I'm sorry, two thousand twenty-one in the Dr. Bearsey Banquet Center. Finally, the district has recently partnered with the City of Westland to create the Compassion Project. Board Trustee Buckaloo shared that he was impressed with the volume of good things that are occurring in our district. Board Treasurer May seconded Mr. Buckaloo's sentiments as well as acknowledged the difficult work of educators right now. Yet our team shows up every day with a smile on their faces and they exhibit enjoyment in what they do. The meeting was adjourned at five twenty-eight PM. The next Finance Committee meeting will be Tuesday, October twenty-sixth, twenty-two thousand twenty-one, at four thirty PM. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. May. Good luck tomorrow.
Thanks.
Our next item on our agenda, one five five point two two, is the review and approval of business service and finance items such as Ms. May has just discussed. Mrs. Cleaves, good evening.
Good evening. The first is a recommendation for Bid Pack Five for the addition and remodeling projects for Edison, Hamilton, and Schweitzer. And I wanted to turn it over to Mr. Spiezak and Mr. Underwood.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Um, tonight I have, uh, Dan Jerome with French Associates and Doug Underwood with McCarthy and Smith. Mr. Jerome's gonna go a quick summary of what we're actually doing at Edison, Hamilton, and Schweitzer next summer. Uh, and then Mrs. Cleaves will read the recommendation. And then after that is completed, Mr. Underwood will come up and answer any questions that you have regarding the bids.
Good evening. It's great to be here.
Good evening. Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Do you have anything clever to say while we're waiting for them?
Absolutely nothing. It was there for a second. Um, okay, so this is Edison Elementary. I should have warmed my glasses. So at Edison Elementary, the, the feature of, of each of the three projects is a multipurpose room addition, um, at, on each elementary school. It's a phys ed classroom that's being added to each building. Um, it's in the, on the far right-hand side here at Edison, uh, in, in the pale blue that you see there. And, uh, it, it's, it's a sixty by forty multipurpose room with a small storage room, some custodial space, and, uh, and, and, uh, it's connected with a corridor to the existing building. And Edison is positioned so that you can, uh, enter the, the addition from the parking lot. It also adds as, uh, acts as access from the building, that end of the building, out to the playgrounds. When we build the new phys ed classroom, the existing cafeteria, we can take the gym equipment down in the existing cafeteria and redo the finishes in that space so that the cafeteria will look new. And we're also modifying the layout of the serving and kitchens in the buildings. And the solution, what it does is instead of the kids going into the cafeteria and lining up in the cafeteria to go into the serving space, we'll actually enter the serving area from the corridor, pass through, and then go into the cafeteria. And we're, we're accomplishing a similar solution at the other buildings. Um, the other feature of the project is a secure entrance at the elementary schools. And it's a little bit different at each building. Here at Edison, we're actually creating a secure vestibule in the corner of the existing, uh, reception space that's already there. So when you come to the building, you'll go into that secure vestibule before you admit it into the office. And then, uh, you'll be in the office before you admit it out into the building if necessary. Uh, we're also redoing the entrance canopy, uh, at each building, including the one here at Edison. And this is an image of the multipurpose room addition, uh, that you'd see from the street. Uh, we have tweaked the brick colors, actually, at each building to more closely resemble the, the existing brick on each building. So we've, the, the images you'll see here, the brick is pretty, is the same on each project, but we've actually modified the brick colors at each building to match what's already there. So if we move on to the next building, which usually is Hamilton because we usually go in alphabetical order. So Hamilton, again, on the right-hand side, the light blue diagram, that's, that's the multipurpose room, uh, addition. At, uh, Hamilton, we actually had to pull it away from the building and have that connecting corridor because we can't cover up the, uh, the windows on the existing classrooms that are there. So we pulled the, uh, the addition away. And again, it has access from the parking lot side and, and has access out to the playgrounds. The rest of the project is similar to, to what we talked about at Edison, the secure entrance here. Very simple at Hamilton. There's an existing vestibule. We actually just had to pull the inner vestibule doors back far enough so that we could cut a door into the, the main office there. Um, so we'll have that same secure entrance. The light green areas are the classrooms. And I failed to mention this at Edison, but the scope works the same at, at the buildings. We're taking out the horizontal unit ventilators that provide heat only in each building and replacing them with a vertical unit ventilator that actually is, uh, heating and cooling. So all the, all the elementary classrooms will be cooled once the projects are complete. Along with that, we changed the classroom doors out. We, uh, we replaced the, uh, the old metal bookshelves there along the outside wall with new cabinets because they get torn out with the, uh, the unit ventilator that's part of that system. And we'll redo the flooring and, and paint the walls. So the classrooms will really take on a new look, uh, in each building. Uh, we are replacing boilers at all the buildings. Always exciting to replace boilers. Uh, we are milling and repaving parking lots. And we are doing, uh, roof replacements that have been identified as, as, as needed to be replaced by a, a roof study. Here's the addition at, uh, Hamilton. Again, if, this is the view from the, the parking lot. So you see there is a similar, sim- similarity in, in the appearance of each, uh, gym addition that we're doing. I mean, that is intentional. And finally, Schweitzer. Schweitzer's addition is also on the right-hand side. This time we'll have access, uh, from the bus loop at Schweitzer. that's on that that end of the building. And again, also provides access to the playground. The secure entrance at Schweitzer was more challenging. The existing office is in this, in the middle of the building. It's not on an outside wall right now. So what we did there is we actually extended the office out into some corridor space. There's actually two corridors that go from the the east side of the building to the west side of the building. And we actually are eliminating one of those corridors. Talked with the principal about that. And so we're pulling the office forward so it can, again, be next to a secure vestibule and control entrance to the building. We also picked that corridor space up in the existing cafeteria. And what that does is right now at at Schweitzer, the kids go through the serving line and get their lunch. And then they have to go through doors to get into the cafeteria. And by capturing that corridor space, we can actually take those doors off so the kids can go into the serving line, get their lunch, and they don't have to pass through a door to get to the cafeteria. So we think that'll be a big improvement there. The classroom improvements are similar, adding air conditioning to the building, replacing old casework, new floors, and painting the, painting the walls. We do have some entrances at at Schweitzer that are old, wood trim and glass and and really a, in needs of replacement and updating. They also have doors that swing directly into the corridor. So we're replacing those classroom entrances with an alcove entrance. So when you open the door to the classroom, it doesn't swing out into the clear width of the hallway so students can walk by without risking getting hit by a door that pops open. And if we look at the image of Schweitzer, and this is our view actually from the bus loop, what's the name of that street? I can't remember the name of the street. Glenwood, thank you, Tony. So this is our view from Glenwood and and the bus drop-off there at Schweitzer Elementary.
With that, I'll turn it over to Mrs. Cleaves.
So there is a public bid opening that was held on October 7, 2021. I am requesting board approval to award contracts to the various companies that's in your packet, the numerous ones. And the total award recommendation amount is $14,526,016. And this project will be charged to the bond, ESSER, and sinking funds.
Thank you, Ms. Cleaves. Is there a motion?
So move.
Moved by Mr. Albrecht, supported by Dr. Weaver. Discussion?
One quick question. One thing I love to do, like every year, maybe like a tour through the schools. I haven't been able to do it for like with COVID. When I was with our last board member, Carol Modell, we were talking about like some of the, like the floor is like a certain type of floor they don't make anymore. So like, and like some of the bricks, you know, because the builds were like built like way back in the 60s. So did you just put like new type of, since you can't really get that type of material anymore for like the floors and the bricks and?
Yeah, so we're using a resilient vinyl flooring in the classrooms. So it's, you're right, we can't get a lot of the flooring materials that were used in the building originally. And since we're replacing everything throughout, it's pretty uniform. Two of the buildings actually have terrazzo corridor floors.
Yeah, terrazzo.
And we're going to leave those corridor floors in place. Those are the best corridor floors you can ever have.
Okay.
Unfortunately, we can rarely afford to do terrazzo floors anymore. And the number of people actually installed terrazzo is dwindling rapidly, so. But you should keep terrazzo floors when you have them. They're they're a great asset to any building.
Further discussion? Roll call vote, please, Ms. Hines?
Yes. Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes, 6-0, motion passes.
Thank you, Ms. Hines. Ms. Cleaves?
Hi, Doc.
Can I say one thing?
Sure.
We do have, we received great bid coverage on this. We had over 222 bids. We did have one category of work that isn't listed tonight that we did put back out on the street and extended the bid. So I will be bringing that bid to you on November 22nd, along with our bid pack six, which is currently out for bid right now. And that's the Stevenson Franklin project.
But your bid experience is getting better.
Yeah, it's it's taken some work.
Yeah.
It's good.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Cleaves?
I'm requesting board approval to issue a change order to an existing contract with Moss Audio Incorporated. This comes as a recommendation from Communications by Design. This change order is for the capital additions that are needed at our Wayne Memorial and John Glenn High Schools. At Wayne Memorial High School, the additional cabling is needed in the counseling office, cafeteria, and new classroom additions. At John Glenn High School, cabling is needed in the general office, counseling office, cafeteria, and new classroom additions. This cabling will support the safety and security project, as well as the cameras to cover the renovated spaces. If approved, the cost for the change order will not exceed $217,380 and will be charged to the bond fund.
Thank you, Ms. Cleaves. Is there a motion? Moved by Mr. Albrecht, support?
Support.
Support by Ms. May. Discussion? Roll call vote, please, Ms. Hines?
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes, and Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Motion passes, 6-0.
Thank you. Ms. Cleaves?
The next item is a recommendation to purchase Beable resources. I'm requesting board approval to purchase Beable Life Ready Literacy Resource. The Beable program is an online program which has two focus areas. The first focus area is literacy, and the second is World of Work, which will focus on career exploration. This program offers an initial assessment of the student and then builds a program based on the student's level to support both literacy in all core areas, as well as the career exploration. Training for staff will begin mid-November, and implementation will begin in January of 2022. The pricing for the software will not exceed $265,252, and it also includes three years of service. If approved, the cost of this program will be charged to the ESSER grant.
Thank you, Ms. Cleaves. Is there a motion?
So move.
Moved by Dr. Weaver, support by Mr. Albrecht. Is there discussion?
Quick discussion.
Ms. Hines?
I was quite impressed about some of the statistics that Dr. Dignan showed us about this program to help our kids catch up because we do definitely have to worry about making sure that our kids can be competitive in this world. So a lot of, you know, with COVID, they lost a lot of skills. So this is going to be able to help with literacy and math and, you know, be more up to date. So that way, we can be that school district that people want to come to. Because, you know, if you can't repass a third grade level, they said they actually built prisons due to those statistics. So it's very important that our kids are knowledgeable in math and, you know, English and learning. So I'm really confident, I'm really proud of Dr. Dignan for thinking outside of the box and having this program to help our kids succeed. That's what's most important at the end of the day. So thank you for, you know, really looking into this program.
Other members? Roll call vote, please, Melody.
All right, we have Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes, Ms. May?
Yes.
We have Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
And Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Let the record show, 6-0, motion passes.
Thank you, Ms. Hines. Section D, Ms. Cleaves.
Yes, I have a recommendation to approve the Head Start Year Four proposed budget. I am requesting approval to approve the proposed Head Start budget for year four, which encompasses the timeframe of March 1, 2022, through February 28, 2023. The Head Start program provides comprehensive early childhood education, health, nutrition, and parent involvement setting the groundwork for a successful school career. This program is a federally funded program, and enrollment is based on age and income. If approved, this budget will be submitted to the Wayne Metropolitan to obtain the Office of Head Starts approval.
Thank you, Ms. Cleaves. Is there a motion?
So move.
Mr. Albrecht, supported by Dr. Weaver. Is there discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Just one question. Been involved in this quite a bit in the past. Is Wayne Metro the parent organization that our Head Start operates under?
Yes.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Ms. Hines?
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes, Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
And Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Let the record show, 6-0, motion passes.
Thank you, and thank you, Ms. Cleaves. Next item on our agenda this evening, 156.22, is the review and approval of human resource items, or as it says here, a privil. Dr. Dignan?
Good evening, members of the board. I'd like to present for your review and approval, Mr. Charles Sorrentino for the Assistant Principal position at John Glenn High School. If you go to page 32 of your work packet, you can read kind of the data sheet there.
So move.
Moved by Mr. Albrecht?
Support.
Support by Ms. Hines. Is there discussion? Roll call vote, please, Ms. Hines?
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. May?
Ms. May has.
She disappeared.
Herself.
And Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Melody Hines, yes. And Mr. Cox?
Yes.
And the board's going to take a five-minute recess. And I'm going to get coffee.